Good evening, this is the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. It is February 27, 2018 at 7:08 PM. The first item on our agenda this evening is Riverstone LLC for a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, to construct a 36-unit condominium in development, including nine affordable units on approximately 6.7 acres of land located off Ward Street, map 124 lots 70 to 75 and 26, in Residence District B. The revised site layout plan dated December 20, 2017 depicts 32 units, and this is a continuation from our prior hearing on February 13, 2018. Just to note for the record that these proceedings are being recorded by HCAM as well as by the zoning board office. Who's here for the applicant?
Warren Baker and Ryan Murphy.
Please, if you want to stop there. As is our customary procedure in this matter, I'm going to first ask the zoning administrator, Emily Wentworth, to review items that have been received into the public records since our last hearing.
Since, well, actually during the last hearing, we received the updated waiver list. It has a revision date of February 12, again, received during the hearing on February 13. I did confirm that the applicant's engineer had submitted it by email late that afternoon. It got stuck in our spam filter because it was in the wrong file extension. So anyways, that was received during the last hearing.
Can everyone hear, Emily? Okay, great, thank you.
Next, from the applicant, or on behalf of the applicant, we received an email from Brad McKenzie of McKenzie Engineering Group dated February 21, 2018, responding to a submittal status inquiry from the zoning administrator and confirming that plan revisions were not completed by the expected submittal date of 2/2018. We also received correspondence from Attorney Baker dated February 22, 2018, responding to concerns raised by the board during the February 6, 2018, hearing, and again summarized by the chair during the February 13, 2018, hearing. As well as correspondence from Attorney Baker dated February 22, 2018, requesting a continuance of this evening's hearing to March 20, 2018, and offering an extension of the board's hearing deadline to May 23, 2018. Materials submitted by representatives of the board and/or the town include an email dated February 20, 2018, from Emily Wentworth, the zoning administrator, responding to a request from Attorney Baker dated February 16, 2018, for a list of concerns outlined in the February 6, 2018, hearing. The response was a partial list of concerns that I had outlined during that hearing, and Attorney Baker was referred to the YouTube recording of the hearing to get the full extent of the board's concerns. We also received a message from Susan Sarnie, Executive Health Director, including comments on the applicant's requested waivers from Board of Health supplementary rules and regulations for the disposal of sanitary sewage. The message is dated February 22. We received a peer review report from John Zimmer, the board's wetland scientist of South River Environmental, dated February 23, 2018, received in the office yesterday, February 26. Correspondence from Lonnie Fornier, the conservation officer, dated February 27, 2018, as well as revised peer review estimates from both Jeffrey Dirk of Vanessa Associates and Patrick Brennan of Ameri Engineers today, that we received today. There's a long list of materials and comments we received from the butters because the board had suggested that they submit conditions of approval by last week. So in response to that request, we received a package of materials. The package was received February 15 and included comments and/or suggested conditions of approval from Graham Madison, 12 Autumn Circle, dated February 15; Brad Jacobs, dated February 8; Robert Bluke, 21 Howland Lane, dated February 8; James Campbell, dated February 8; Ellen Bradford of 10B Old Colony Road, whoops, sorry, my computer just jumped, dated February 11, 2018; Maureen Lynch, 10 Autumn Circle, dated February 11, 2018; Lisa Taylor, 16 Autumn Circle, dated February 12, 2018; Bob Friedman, dated February 14, 2018; Robert and Mary Cosgrove, 42 Ward Street, dated February 12, 2018; Maria Burke, dated February 12, 2018; Bob Bluke, dated February 12, 2018, referring to the environmental impact section of a letter previously submitted by Graham Madison, dated January 19, 2018; Glenda and Scott Garland of 19 Autumn Circle, submitted comments dated February 12, 2018; Charlie and Julie Driggs of 272 High Street, submitted comments dated February 12, 2018; Danielle Doherty, comments dated February 12, 2018; Suzanne Kay, comments dated February 13, 2018; Jane Friedman, comments dated February 13, 2018; Ed Johnson, 108 Ward Street, comments dated February 13, 2018; Joyce Bethany, 23 Autumn Circle, comments dated February 13, 2018; Brian and Kate Marks, 37 Ward Street, comments dated February 13, 2018; Eddie Steele, 18 Ward Street, comments dated February 13, 2018; Lisa Peterson, 216 High Street, comments dated February 13, 2018. That was the package that we received. We also separately received comments from Ellie Hickey, 5 Autumn Circle, dated February 15, 2018, noting that there were some technical issues with the last video recording of the February 13 hearing. As a result, I allowed the neighbors a couple of extra days to provide suggested conditions of approval to the board. We also received comments from Joyce Bethany, 23 Autumn Circle, dated February 20, 2018; comments from Ellie Hickey, 5 Autumn Circle, dated February 20, 2018; comments from Steve Hurley, 49 Ward Street, dated February 20 and February 21; photographs from Paul Wary, 65 Ward Street, they're undated, received February 21, 2018; email from Ellie Hickey, 5 Autumn Circle, which is dated February 21, 2018, including a link to an opinion piece by Lisa Taylor that was in the February 20 edition of the Hingham Journal. The piece is entitled "Riverstone's Safety Issues Outweigh Eight Affordable Units." Correspondence from Ed Johnson, 108 Ward Street, received February 22, 2018; comments from Attorney Jeff DeLeese, dated February 22, 2018, noting that a consolidated list of suggested conditions of approval from the neighborhood would be postponed until revised plans were submitted and reviewed; and comments from Lisa Taylor, 16 Autumn Circle, dated February 27, 2018, today. So that is what we've received in the last couple of weeks.
Exhaustive list, and on behalf of the board, I would like to extend my thanks to neighbors, butters, and concerned citizens who've taken the time and submitted their comments. We've had on our agenda, and I've announced it several times for several weeks, that tonight was going to be the evening that we were going to be reviewing and considering proposed conditions associated with the proposed permit, and reviewing in detail the waiver list so that the applicant would be on notice about what we were looking for. And the input from the community is vital to our ability to make sure that all concerns are addressed. So thank you very much, really appreciate it. And with that, I would now like to turn this over to Mr. Baker, and if he could explain why he has asked for a continuance to March 20.
Thank you. I had submitted a letter on February 22 to the board which was identified. At the prior hearing, what we did is there were a number of requests made, one of them which was to cite the site distances on the plan itself. While that's sort of unusual, it's not unheard of at all. And as a matter of fact, it's part of the process, but a rare one indeed. So when we looked at our data, we had appropriate site distances for the Ward Street entrance. However, when we placed it on the map itself, we found that the site distance that was taken did traverse some of the front yard of a neighbor. During the comments in the hearing, there was an announcement by individual neighbors, and I think maybe even their attorney, that said that they intended to plant or put up something that would essentially obstruct or block that site distance. When we looked at it, the question became, there were some very interesting legal questions because of the existing roadway, et cetera, and its time period, and also some other questions of whether or not we could do that. In reviewing that, we felt that it was far too tight an issue for what is otherwise a very critical issue, and as you know, on Ward Street, there's a bend that goes around there, and that's what caused it rather than straight. And without placing it in the field, one cannot always know whether or not you're traversing any of the neighbor's property. When we looked at it, we said, no, we're not going to progress on that way, because that issue is too tight and too problematic, we think, because it is our project and we also have to sell that project and do a number of other kinds of things. So it makes it more appropriate to look at an alternative for our main entrance. Essentially, as anyone looks at the map and has looked at, as you go farther down on Ward Street, obviously, there's a fair amount of frontage going all that way. It also straightens out just before the church. And so therefore, what we're doing is that we are now saying, all right, let's investigate an alternative entrance. Let's see what we will do with Viking. Let's see what we need to do with realigning it, because along that way, there are numerous buildings. So therefore, that has to be altered and moved if an entrance is going to be done and has to reset. That will impact the internal flow. It may impact the sighting of various buildings. It may impact drain, it may be a number of different questions. There's also a fair amount of wetlands over on the right, as you well know. So when we made that determination, it was impossible to meet the submittal date that the engineer had hoped for, hence the letter from him, and also a follow-up letter from me, basically saying, we can't meet that, here's the rationale, and we need time to redo that and do it correctly. You don't want to rush it in, you don't want to rush your only other hand. We had spoken, I think, on many occasions about the extend date, and I had indicated, I think you recall, that if matters came up, we are not adverse to extension to make sure that we get everything for the board. This is one of them. So what I did is I requested that, asked the engineer when he could submit plans and when he could do it, and he was off and running with a lot of things. And by the way, the determination has not been made, I can't give you any insight into what makes sense or not. I also contacted the traffic engineer to make sure that he also could review it, look at the site distance questions and the other things. So he has a lot of data, but he would have to update that.
Your traffic engineer?
Our traffic engineer, absolutely. So Mr. McKenzie did send a letter shortly thereafter, saying, we intend to file these materials in the week of March 5th. So the 5th to the 9th. The traffic engineer also said to me, we can do that within that same timeframe. The idea was then to have that material in by that, that means the next hearing would be at least a week and a half after that, so that your peer review people and the board would have that well in advance of a scheduled hearing on the 20th.
Have you made any changes to your Autumn Circle, using that as another egress?
In all honesty, the three entrances, the potential new one, Autumn Circle and the other one, are all in the mix. So I can't give you a definite whether or not one would not be used or one would be used. I think that the traffic of the site issue puts a problem with regard to Viking Lane, but that problem does not exist with regard to the other two, and the consistent request to have an entrance and an exit from that way. Whether or not Viking could be a limited access kind of situation and how that works, we're trying to put that together to see what makes some practical sense and also impacts the flow within the design of the thing itself. Everything's on the table, if that helps.
So you're talking about getting us plans the week of March 5?
5th to the 9th, yeah.
And we need to be sure that we have adequate time to have whatever submitted peer reviewed, and you've identified important issues in terms of traffic, drainage, wetlands, all those things will need to be looked at, and we want to make sure that we're in a position to have that peer review done before the March 20 meeting, so that we can actually make progress. Because we want to be sure, this board wants to be sure that we're in a position that we can, again, get to the proposed conditions and waivers, so that we've got adequate time to have you, in fact, give us your input based on what we're looking at as conditions, and to give the neighbors and the butters an opportunity to, in fact, provide additional input if your revised plans so warrant. When I look at the schedule, what I would hope is that two weeks before the March 20 hearing, which would bring us to March 6, that we would have the submissions. So that would then, in fact, give us adequate time to do the review. If, in fact, it's really not March 6, it's end of business the 9th, we've lost that entire week, it's going to make March 20 problematic. So if, in fact, you don't think you can do the 6, then we may want to push things back so that we can, we get things accomplished, rather than having an artificially compressed time period. So I would like to honor your proposed schedule with March 20 as the next hearing, assuming that you can get us the submissions by the 6. If you don't think that's going to work, then we should talk about some options.
It probably would be wise to look at it, because I agree with you that if we miss that date, because the engineer is moving and direction, and many times, as you know, because you see these all the time, something may come up when you're doing this one, which extends it back the other side. And so therefore, to come in with a disappointment, saying we've really lost some time, I'm not sure that the entirety of the hearing would be adversely, it would be adversely impacted if we rushed it. But it wouldn't be if, and what I'm hearing is that that 20th date should be extended by a week?
Yeah, I mean, it seemed, yeah, I think that's right. If we push that date-
Put everything back.
...the end date back by a week, so that we're consistent with what you've got, but it actually gives the peer review and everything-
One thing I do note to the board, that the extension that I had signed, and we can obviously re-execute, I moved from the last hearing date, not this hearing date.
Yeah, I got it.
So there was a buffer a little bit in there, so I just wanted to let you know.
That's wise.
It's wise.
So it sounds like, and let me, in terms of our schedule, if, so what I'm hearing is moving the 20th-
The 27th is not an option, we have a conflict.
I have a conflict on the 27th, I'm sorry.
Are there any other days that week that we can do that will work for you?
Other than Tuesday.
Other than Tuesday?
Other than Tuesday, I'm free that week.
Can we do Monday? Emily, do you, Susan?
I would just-
28th may be problematic.
I, right now, I don't have anything else on the 26, but there's a couple of things in front of the planning board that, and I, but, you know-
Yeah, they meet on Mondays.
And they usually meet on Mondays, so I'm not, I'm not sure, so I just-
What about the 28th, then?
Is that a problem for you, Joe? Did you say a possible conflict?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It may or may not be, I don't know yet, I won't know till later this week, unfortunately. So the Thursday, the 29th, or are we already scheduled for a meeting of the board or rescheduled?
No, you're just scheduled for the 27th.
I mean, I don't, like I said, I'm not aware of anything for the planning board, so I could just let the planning board chair know when they're continuing things out, that I might not be able to do the 26, since you guys are, you guys asked me first. So I'm, if that's best for everybody, then I don't want to hold up progress.
Are you available, the 26th?
The 26th.
Okay.
Yeah, which is that Monday?
Monday?
Yes.
We are.
That is, in fact, the last Monday in March. And then, so if we move that hearing to, what did we say, the 26, and then move the hearing to, it's now the last hearing date, May 23, so what day is the week? Is that, May 23, is that?
We have three peer review engineers lined up for the 20th, I don't know if any-
Emily, I'm thinking just pushing it back to the 30th?
Yeah.
Or is that?
The only other potential issue is that we have three peer review engineers that are lined up to attend on March 20, and I don't know their availability to meet on any other evenings at this point. Would it be possible to do a check-in hearing next week, potentially, to see if you can meet the deadline of March 6, and if so, then?
Let's assume that they cannot.
That they cannot, okay.
So I think, let's get the buffer, and, yeah. So assuming they can't.
You cannot.
Right, 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 right.
If we do, the time period we just worked out still works.
Right.
More time rather than less.
Right, exactly. So why don't we, let's talk about the end date, and then we can, so we're talking about changing the, pushing the other dates back a week, if that-
Yes.
Right, okay, so the 23rd becomes the 30th, and just so on. Okay? And then, the only issue is going to be the specific date for the continuance, given the peer review, we're talking about the 26, so why don't we, I'd like to schedule for the 26, and note that if they cannot do it the 26, we have the option of the 28th or the 29th, assuming that works for your, I don't want to push it past that week.
Except for that we would have to meet on the 26th.
We'd have to, right, right, so we could, yes, but that would be a meeting they would not have to attend.
If they could have two members just come to-
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. So if you could coordinate with the peer review.
Okay.
And again, the 28th may or may not be problematic, I just won't know until later this week.
Okay, well, then, it's going to be 26, maybe the 28th or at least the 29th.
Right.
Okay. And I know the 30th is Good Friday, so I'm assuming people have their plans set for I'd like to review what it is that we expect to receive, so that we're all comfortable.
Joe, can I, let me just, just to close the loop, so I took Attorney Baker's-
Yep.
-letter, I just hand-marked it up.
Okay.
I just, I moved the 20th, the 26, and just added a week on to all the other dates, is that what was intended?
Yes.
So the 23rd becomes the 30th.
That's correct.
The 2nd becomes the 9th, I'll just note that I will not be here that week.
That's okay.
But that's okay. The filing deadline would be July 23.
Yep.
That's the way I have it. I don't know if-
I agree with the dates.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if you want to kind of initial this.
If you'd like me to initial it and give it to you right now, happy to.
That'd be great. So we're going past July 4, we're going past Bastille Day, this is going to be interesting. So Emily, I'd like to review-
The day? No, you didn't, you signed that, but you-
Yeah, we'll do a vote, but I want, I'd like to make sure that we understand what it is that we expect by the end of that, of the week of March 5. So if you could review, just-
Sure.
I have an understanding, I want to make sure it's complete.
So the applicants mentioned that they're working on revised plans. Those revised plans should address, and the applicant has acknowledged that they will, address outstanding technical peer review comments. They also should address concerns raised by the board, most specifically during the hearing on February 6. Any of those refigions are likely to impact the drainage report, so we would expect either a supplement to the drainage report or a revised drainage report. Same for the traffic impact and access study, to the extent that the access to the site may be changing, either a revised report or a narrative from your traffic engineer. We also would expect narrative responses to outstanding peer review comments and department comments that you either have just received or may receive in the coming days. We still need a complete and specific waiver list, so that would be specific to the now revised plans, so presumably, anything received in the past would be, would change anyways. The last version we received still did not identify how the proposed plan differs from our local conservation or Board of Health regulations, so you had a column under zoning for how the plan differed from the requirement, but not under other local regulations, so we'd look for that to be updated as well. And then I had noted earlier that we received revised peer review estimates from both our civil and our traffic engineer, and so we would expect with the submittal a check for $9,100.
And that's for the peer review of?
Both traffic and civil, for what is going to be the sixth revision of plans.
Okay. Are we going to, are we going to need an additional peer review on wetlands issues?
Not at this time. I mean, we'll see what the response-
And we've got to see what the plans are, but I agree, I'm not anticipating that.
But I do understand, I haven't read it, but it was just handed tonight, the report from South River Environmental with regard to the fact that they went out, and there are some comments on that, so.
Yes, yes.
That is helpful that it's already here.
Yes.
So he notes that there may be a burnout pool, and recommended that you figure that out, you're going to have your consultant look at that.
The answer is yes.
Good.
I would-
It's an appropriate time.
So I was going to do-
Over the next month, so.
I'm sorry, do I-
I was going to do a motion on this now, or?
Well, I guess, I would just ask to kind of just keep it and kind of stick with the letter of the regulations, that if there's a specific peer review amount that you want delivered on a specific date that the board instructs the applicant.
Right. So let's do, let's do the easy one first. So I'd accept the motion that we continue this hearing to March 26, 2018, at 7:00 PM, and consistent with that, that we accept the applicant's offer to extend the public hearing date, the last day for the public hearing, to May 30, 2018, and that would render, mean that the deadline to render a decision would be July 9, 2018, and the filing deadline for the decision would be July 23, 2018. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, next, I would entertain a motion that we request that the applicant provide peer review funds in the amount of, and what is the dollar amount?
$9,100.
$9,100 to be submitted before or before the end of, let's see if I can get my calendar up again, at the end of that week of March 5, so that would be by March 9.
Friday, March 9, right.
2018, and again, the-
1:00 PM and-
Yeah, at 1:00, because the office closes early on that Friday.
Right.
Do we need anything further on that motion for funds, okay?
May I make a request? I know you're in the middle of a motion, but-
Sure.
Okay. Okay. What we would like to see is the peer review billings up to this point in time, so if you'd share that with us, that'll help us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I'd accept that motion for the peer review payment of $9,100 on and before 1:00 p.m. on the 9th of March, 2018.
So moved.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think that's everything we need to cover on this hearing? Other than, I know members of the public are here, if you have comments specifically on this schedule, you can certainly give us those comments, but I don't want to go into anything of substance, because in fact, we're going to have new substance in terms of revised plans. Yes, sir?
My name's Arthur Casey, I live at 17 Autumn Circle.
Yes.
If they revise the plans again, then do we get to make comment on the revised plans? That's my question, because now--
Yes, absolutely, right, so, so, a lot of, I mean, some of the comments that we've received will be germane, others may now need to shift based on the plans that none of us have seen. So, you absolutely have the opportunity, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to give ourselves that extra time, so that we can have information posted on the website, people have a chance to look, and in fact, to respond and give us the input that we need. So, that's a great question, thank you. Okay, so with that, this hearing is continued to the 20th of March at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. We have other items on the agenda--
26th.
I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong one. March 26th. We've got another item on the agenda, so if folks are leaving, just please do so quietly. Aye, March 26th, yes.
Looking at the wrong one.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't think I'm involved in the next one.
Nope.
Although, we always love to have you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Seven Development Group LLC for a finding under Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or a variance from Section 4A of the zoning bylaw, and such other relief as necessary to replace an existing detached non-conforming garage workshop within attached 22 feet by 35 feet two-car garage workshop with living space above, located within the required 15-foot side yard setback at 14 Garrison Road in Residence District A. This hearing is continued from our prior hearing on January 30th, 2018, and I understand that the applicant has requested a subsequent continuance to March 27th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. I see no one here for this hearing. Is there a motion to agree to that continuance?
I'm not sure I can make that date.
Right.
Someone could Mullins in if you get someone else in there, because there's only been one session.
We can do that, yes, we can do that, we'll work on that.
And do we have an extension to the decision?
We do, we have an extension they've offered till April 27th, 2018. Thank you, Joe, for pointing out the scheduling conflict.
Mario is--
No, 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 why not, but that's okay.
He's going to vote for it anyway. Okay, so, is there a motion to continue the hearing to the 27th of March at 7:00 p.m.?
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I will definitely make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.